A call order to the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for February 28th, 2023. The city council, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepe.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Satter.
Here.
Ben Pachusavinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does term Corin number one request to build an outdoor rink by Blue Line Arena. Reed Hutton, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Judd Staus and Matt Foss are here from the Blue Line Club as well. If there's any questions that you'd like to direct towards them. I think just to start the discussion on this agenda item, I just want to make a point to saying that there has not been a lot of work that has gone into this idea. We are far from having a final budget together. There are certainly going to be a lot of questions regarding the build out of this potential location and questions about what it would cost, how we would do it, how far we want to go. I would say all of those are really good questions and still questions that we have that haven't been answered. I wanted to bring it to the council as soon as I could in the forefront of this, just more than anything, to gauge interest from all of you, opinion on the idea of putting an outdoor rink at this location, especially a rink of this magnitude, and kind of some of the detail I talked about in the council packet about how we would see moving forward with outdoor rinks in our community should this rink move forward, being our current two rink locations being at Nash Park and Staus Park. And in the packet I wrote that if we would move forward with a rink of this kind in order to not absorb an extensive additional cost to the park and rec department as far as how much we spend on maintaining and operating outdoor rinks, what I would suggest is that we would continue to maintain the Nash Park location and stop running the rink at Staus Park to be able to add this one to our inventory. And largely the reason for that, before we go into a lot of discussion about the rink itself, is use at the Staus Park rinks has been significantly lower than the Nash Park rink for a number of years. And I think that's largely just due to location and some of the population that lives around the Nash Park area, probably being a little bit of an older demographic of our community and not having as many kids that live in that neighborhood.
Staus Park.
Staus Park, I'm sorry. Did I say Nash? I apologize. Staus Park, being that location. We do, and we've had our warming houses open and we've had sign-ins sheets at those locations. Some winters, we've had as many 12 or as many as 1,200 or 1,300 sign-ins at Nash Park and as few as 600, 5 to 600 at Staus Park. We ask for people to put what age they are when they sign in on those sheets. And the sign-ins at the Nash Park location are largely adolescent, school-aged kids. Staus Park has been more primarily high school and college-age type sign-ins where they're driving specific to that destination to sign in, not as much just neighborhood traffic. So if we were going to look at eliminating a rink and investing in something like this, that'd be my recommendation. As far as the location of it itself, I think there's a lot of positives to it. I think the fact that it's adjacent to the Blue Line Arena, or to both arenas, the Blue Line and the VFW is a real strong positive, number one. It's at a location where a lot of kids already are on a weeknight when we have youth teams practicing. There's as many between figure skating and hockey, there's as many as 300 to 400 kids that enter and exit those doors every night. And you see success in other communities in Minnesota that have rinks, outdoor rinks adjacent to these indoor facilities. There may be a practice scheduled in the Blue Line from 6:00 to 7:00, and when that practice is done at 7:00, the kids are walking right outside and jumping on the ice to skate outside. There's a lot of success in a lot of communities in Minnesota that have that access, that adjacent there. This location has water and power accessible nearby with the buildings. The fact that there's a Zamboni right there that would be able to maintain the ice is a real strong positive. Parking is nearby and accessible for people. So there's a lot of pros to it. There are certainly a lot of questions as well. To touch on the last detail, just this idea started with a few hockey coaches, namely Judd. Coach Tyler Palmesino at the high school was interested in the idea from the very beginning about trying to find solutions that make it a little bit easier, more efficient, more cost-effective for us to make sure we can be successful in getting outdoor rinks open. The initial idea was really, in my mind, was a small outdoor rink, more similar to what we have at our other park locations. And then Mr. Staus made the contact with the University of Denver, knowing that they're putting a new board system in this summer, to see what they were going to do with their old one. And they planned to just throw it away. So there's an option there for us to be able to acquire a really nice set of hockey boards and glass to be able to make use of. And I really think with that option afforded to us, it has potential to take this project really to the next level right away. And that's really kind of started to make this thing move really fast and trying to see what the interest would be in this location and whether or not it's something that, with a partnership with the Blue Line Club, can work for us. So I think with that open for any questions or feedback, thoughts on if it's a good project, bad project, and what you'd like to see from us in order to make sure it can move forward, if that's the direction we want to go.
I guess a couple of things that I have, that I've reached out and talked to Mr. Emery and a couple of others, questions like, two things, what is the placement of what water and light, electrical water, even Jason with storm. So those things are questions of mine that what, A, can it be moved, where can the replacement be? And something I didn't know with talking to Mr. Emery is the insulation that's in that Blue Line Club building for that. How is that next to the building? How's that going to affect where things can go? So I guess those things are things that I want to find out, you know, and I guess really find out if, A, it's going to be grass left inside that thing, if not, if it's going to be the concrete slab, which I would think would probably be the best way to go for year-round use. So, I mean, those things are just right there. If that's cost-effective to do that, what is actually going to cost for the type of footings would they have to do then with the boards if you use a slab? Or if you didn't use a slab, what would you have to do? How would that affect what water and light has to do? I guess all those things kind of, you know, I don't know if it's been looked at real close yet, just kind of maybe understanding that either there is stuff there that has to be looked at, but really hasn't been drawn out that, okay, it's right here, we can't put anything here. So I guess those are the things that I would like to find out.
Okay, absolutely. None of that has been looked at with any great detail. We certainly know it's there. We know there's sanitary sewer underground in this area. We know that there's, water and light has electric and fiber optic utilities buried in that area. I learned more yesterday from Steve about even the insulation and the foundation in the Blue Line Arena and how far it comes out from the immediate outside wall of the building. So I think there's a lot still that needs to be reviewed and learned. And I think that's where my initial point was trying to go is making sure that before we spend a lot of time and resources doing all of that work, that there's a general feeling that we should put that work into it and just see if, whether or not it's an option.
And I think it's a great idea. I just think that we need to make sure that the cost of us having something given to us and the capability of having that is not out of reach for what it costs to do it there. And I hate to say, I mean, let's say it becomes too costly to do at that spot. Has there, has been, any other discussion been had of somewhere else? I think it's a great spot to have it, but I just want to know if that's been talked about.
As far as a secondary location, not really. This is really the first spot we'd like to see it. I will say, I've considered whether or not there was potential if you went on the, I'm trying to get my directions right, I'd call it on the east side of the parking lot at that Trailhead facility, between where the Trailhead bathroom is and the soccer fields. There's an open grass space in that area that has less utilities buried there. There is a stormwater line that runs through that piece, but there's no electricity buried. I've considered that. That has its own cons. The pros of this site, if it can be done with all the underground utilities, is it's so, it's so close to the Blue Line Arena, you could have some shared amenities with warming spaces and restrooms all being right there.
I totally agree with you on that. That's why I think if we have an optimal spot for it, then we need to make sure what's underground there and what we have to do if we want to keep moving forward with it, to have that discussion with water and light, to make sure we have everything pinpointed, work with Jason for everything else there. And I guess that would be where I would want to start to make sure that it's even possible to have something. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. What's the timeline to, like, get the boards? Like, say, we don't make a decision right away, does Denver give them to someone else? Have they had sessions with any other group on what to do with those boards, or is it just, if we don't take them, they just throw them?
Well, they're scheduled to remove the boards on April 8th, I believe.
Judd, if you want to come up and sit.
Thank you.
They're scheduled to remove the boards, I believe, on April 8th, where we got to have two trailers there to load up. So as far as committing to the boards, we got to do that pretty quickly to make sure that we can line everything up logistically with the trucks and whatnot to make sure that they're there. I think it's at 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM on April 8th or 9th to make sure they get loaded and on their way back to here. They don't, that I know of, have any other communities or anything like that that they're looking to give the boards to or donate them to. So at this point, it's just East Grand Forks.
Second question, just big if, say we can't do this, something comes up and we just can't do it, and we have the boards, what obligations do we have to return them? Can we sell them? Do we just have to dispose of them, or do we just keep them for long-term?
Is that for me, Reed, or you?
Oh, I can answer. Judd's answer is if we get them, we're going to find a place to use them. You know, I haven't had any discussion. We have an agreement that the University of Denver wants us to sign if we're going to accept donation, and basically it's a hold harmless, that we accept them as they are and that once they're ours, they're our problem, no longer theirs. They didn't, they haven't indicated at all that, you know, what, if anything, needs to happen with them once we get them. So I guess I would expect if we, if we accept donation, that they're ours to do what we need to do with, whatever that may be.
Anything else, sir?
Mayor?
Is the glass, regular glass or Plexi, and does it care about, say, minus 20?
That's a good question, and that's something we'll have to really discuss with probably the makers of Athletica. There's a guy named Reed Hart who I've talked to a few times, and there's different things that we can do, you know, to make sure that the rink does stay intact. But if you look at Grand Rapids rink, they have a similar situation there, similar setup there where they do have all glass or glass around their rink, but there's still things, and I think Reed was talking at one point, even inside the Civic Center, where, you know, you have expanding and contracting and trying to make sure that they don't expand, and then when the glass hits it, or touches, it breaks. But the glass is rated for, I mean, it's all different than the Blue Line Club rink, you know, it's cold and it'll last. It's more so the glass touching.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Tim?
Are we going to get the costs? I know I've talked to Keith and I believe Mark talked to you, right, Steve, that whether we put the concrete down or we don't put the concrete down, we're talking close to $100,000-plus cost.
Yeah, I think that's the next step. If we feel like you guys are all at least comfortable enough with the idea of this, that we move forward, is that we're going to put a budget together for what it's going to cost to do so. And between myself and working with the Blue Line Club, Judd specifically, we've started doing that already, but we don't have enough to be able to tell you with any certainty what it would cost today. But that's the next step, certainly.
Brian?
Yeah, just a question on the agreement with the boards from University of Denver. Is that between the Blue Line Club and Denver, or the City of East Grand Forks and the University of Denver?
I would say that's probably not an answer we've totally discussed and figured out yet. The hold harmless agreement that the University of Denver sent to us in draft form basically listed both the park and rec department and the Blue Line Club as the receiving entity. So that needs to be worked through. I haven't even shared it with Ron or talked through with Ron since he was on vacation last week, but I think it could probably go one of two ways, in just, in layman terms, is that it could go to the Blue Line Club and the Blue Line Club donates it to the city, or we could accept it directly from the city.
Yeah. I would think on the surface, I'd recommend it's between the Blue Line Club and the University of Denver. That way, the Blue Line Club, if you want to accept these boards, go, you know, go for it. It's kind of outside of what we're talking about here to scope this project out. And then we'll work together on that. I support the concept. Like everyone said, we just got to know what the final costs are to put this thing together. I would sure like to see an option for a concrete slab out there, so we could use this for like roller hockey in the summer, footsall, or, you know, it's kind of helping us develop this like regional recreational complex. When you look at the aerial view, you've got pickleball, and we'd have this roller hockey and, you know, indoor and outdoor and soccer. It's really a cool project. So I would just like to see the costs and work through the details, but I think the concept's great. The location, I understand why it's ideal, protected from the north and the west. We can get lights off of the, off the building. There's a parking lot right there. So hopefully there isn't much of utility conflicts that, you know, put the cost through the roof, and we can come up with a plan. But I'd be happy to help. I told Reed earlier today, you know, let's all reach out and work together and put together a total cost estimate on this thing quickly, so we can move forward with some confidence. So, that's my thoughts.
Anybody else have anything? Dale, do you have anything, sir?
Yeah, I'm on board with what everybody's been talking about, but I am a little concerned about closing down Staus Park. That does get used quite a bit, there's quite a bit of kids over there. This year, you know, Reed got the call, there was an issue with the rinks not being open, and so they were really missed this year over there. I don't think we want to take too much more out of Staus Park. Even if it's just the outdoor, you know, just a skating rink and without the boards or whatever, if we could even at least stick to that much, so they have a place to go skate over in that area, I'd like for us to, you know, talk about that a little, you know, down the road here before we just say no on that.
Anybody else have anything?
Reed? Just quickly, I'm just going to, so it's out there. The only reason I brought forward the recommendation of closing Staus Park is just simply the concern about how we can maintain all these outdoor rinks. We already have the issue now of whether or not we can maintain them up to the quality that our residents expect, and that's, that was the first concern I raised to Judd when this idea came up at this location, is whether or not we have enough staff capacity to maintain it properly. So, all for keeping as many outdoor rinks open as we possibly can, but just, it all needs to fit within what our priorities are for our staff and what we have for a budget to work with each year.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything? See, nothing else? We'll bring it back as next work session, I guess. Try to?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I'm sorry, one thing, you'll have to accept or reject the boards between now and our next work session? You're going to take them, right?
Yeah, the plan is to take the boards.
I'd say go for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on to number two, bridge consultant update. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President, Council Members. As you're aware, that this is a project that's been going on for a little while now, working with the consultant, SRF, to do the bridge study as far as what we need to, what process we need to go for putting a bridge at a new location, both an inner-city bridge and a bridge outside of the city. That's typically discussed as the Maryfield location. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, because recently the request was made that the counties be included and that the counties participate at a 25% cost share as well. This did go to Polk County at their last city council, or county board meeting. They did approve it, but they did approve it for a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. One quarter of the cost is $37,792.58. So with that being said, Grand Forks County, we do not know what they are going to be doing yet. They're going to be discussing this at their March 7th meeting. So I did put a copy of the Polk County Board of Commissioners RCA in your packet, and also the fact that the resolution where we, as the City of East Grand Forks, did say that we would participate up to 50% of the cost share for that. So, so I wanted to give you an update on that. I guess I don't really need anything from the, from the city council right at this point, other than, at some point then, if, depending what happens with the overall project, we'll probably be coming back and requesting that we fill the gap, whatever gap that might be between Polk County and what their quarter, what their share would have been. So I guess that's my report. I'll take any questions that you may have on this subject.
Our share would be roughly about $53,000 then? Anybody have anything? Thank you, sir. Move on to number three, discussion on interim and full-time city administrator position. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Again, with my departure, coming here at the end of April, we need to get some direction on the process on what to do to fill the position in the interim and also long-term. There are really three major companies that handle executive city administrator headhunting or recruitment here in the area. They are Gov HR and Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly absorbs Springstead. Springstead was one of the bigger ones as well, but they were absorbed by Baker Tilly. Both Gov HR and Baker Tilly are national firms, and they do national recruiting. They do have local consultants that work in the area, and I am familiar with both of them. David Drown Associates are more Midwest. They handle more like the five-state area, and they do this type of work as well. So of the three, two of them really do not provide interim city administrator services. David, excuse me, Gov HR does provide that. David Drown and Baker Tilly do not. They will assist you with it, but they don't really provide that type of service. And on that note, for the interim, I do have a list that was compiled by the League of Minnesota Cities, and we can talk about that in a minute here as well. One of the advantages, at least that I see in going with a recruiting firm, is that all three of these ones, these firms will meet with the city council, they will interview the city council, typically they provide questionnaires, they try to find out what, what type of management style, what type of personality, what you value in a city administrator and what you want to see. And that way they can tailor their search to recruit applicants that fit more of what your style and what you'd like to see here. So this, so with that, I guess I would take any questions on the council that you may have as far as what you want to, would see with the consultant. And what I'm looking for tonight is then if the council decides that that's the direction they want to go, I would get proposals from all three and bring them back to the council for a review and to adopt. The one thing I will say with an interim, I've been looking to, typically an interim is usually a retired person, somebody that was worked in city administration for their career and then has retired, and then will hire themselves out for three, four, five months on an interim basis to fill in when they're recruiting. It's better to have one that's local, that can drive. I have not really found one that's really close yet. So if that's the case, it's possible if we go the interim route, we might have to provide some sort of housing allowance for them to stay at one of our local hotels, something like that, when they're here during the week. So I guess that is my report, and I will take any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Murphy, council? Mr. Bitter?
Thank you. I think in the past with interim, we always had one of our other staff that was already here step up to the table and took on interim responsibilities. I don't know that we've ever gone out and hired a outside person as an interim. I don't recall anyway. I think this is an opportunity also for us to take a look at our, our structure to see if we want to make some changes. I think one of the areas we can look at is combining the city administrator and the EDA director into one position. Mr. Gordy, I think, has made known that he may be retiring here in the near future, so this may be an opportune time to look if we want to combine those two into one position and maybe have some cost savings there, and probably have that discussion before we're hiring Drown and Associates or one of the other ones to look for a city administrator, because that would change the person that we may be looking for, may not.
If I may address that, when I started here, it was Carl Lindquist was interim when I got here, and I'm not really sure what his status was. I know he, at that time, I know he was, he was-
He was not an employee of the city at the time.
Yeah.
He had retired, and he was just kind of out there, and then it kind of filled in with kind of an opportunity for him to be able to assist, so we took it on.
And I guess as far as working with one of the consultants for that, if you want to change the scope of the position, have it going to be more ranging, I think that would be something that would be very beneficial to discuss with one of the consultants, as far as seeing, they'll have some experience in what the candidate pool might be for that type of combined position. They would work with you on kind of working with what those duties would be and kind of how realistic that would be, because it's not uncommon that there are city administrator and EDA directors combined. And they would work with you on making sure that it's a realistic position description, and they could give you a good idea if that would change potentially what the salary requirements would be for that. So it is something that personally I think would be beneficial to discuss with one of the consultants. I think they could give you some guidance on that, but certainly we'll take whatever direction the council gives me.
Mayor?
Considering your workload, David, as our city administrator, how much capacity would you have to take on economic development activities, given the other tasks that you have day in, day out?
That's a good question. It kind of depends on the season and where we're at with, you know, with the department heads. The department heads that we have right now, yeah, they really handle their departments well. I don't have to really work with them, you know, that, that much in there.
You have to reel in council members from time to time?
Yeah. I, I could, I would think it could be done with somebody assisting with it, meaning, you know, you'd have to have some administrative staff to assist with it, but I could see it being done, yes.
And I guess the other one thing I would just make clear for all of us is, everything's on the table, right? We're going to be willing to look at any and all options as we do create a structure that will work well for our city. And that includes even the question of, you know, where do we find an interim, who will that person be? These things are, we're in the front end of this whole process. And I do appreciate Clarence, your willingness, and whoever else came up with the idea of maybe combining. And we really should think creatively like that and reimagine things. This would be the time to do it, I think. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything?
I think one of the things I would like to see, if we do talk to those companies, is right immediately, I think we'd probably need to really look at the interim stuff. And then also start having discussions with them about combination of, you know, job duties, what that would look like. I know there's a couple of cities out there that do it, but I guess I'd like to see what the makeup would be, how it would be handled, you know, what the job description would be. I guess you have to go out there and point it to, I suppose, to figure out what that's going to, pay is going to be. But I think we need to make sure that- But I don't know the rules, that's what he's for. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess, uh, another thing, uh, the question I have, and I asked Terry to come in case there's any questions on the HR side of it, and what I know, we're looking at companies, would we ever entertain about not using one of those companies and do it internally? I guess. I, I just want to make sure that that was part of a discussion so we didn't leave on, you know?
Uh, that, that's always an option, and, uh, certainly, that's an option that's available to the city. I guess if you're, if you're asking, just in my experience, um, I would say it's probably the, the less attractive way to go. Um, a lot, a lot of the administrators are, really look at these, at the headhunter groups, uh, the recruitment groups. Uh, the recruitment groups will also reach out to, uh, city administrators that they know, um, might be looking to relocate or looking for a, a step up or, or new experience, something along those lines. And I, like everything else, um, the, they're still getting applicants and, and some good applicants for the, for the positions that are open, but they have noticed, like everything else, the, the applicant pool has shrunk significantly. Um, uh, COVID really wrung out a lot of the baby boomer city administrators. Um, a good share of them didn't come back, um, once, once they went remote. And, um, when I was speaking with a couple of them here, just seeing if they would be able to give us a proposal, um, kind of timelines, those types of things, they even said that there's, um, a lot of, it's, they're noticing a trend of, of city administrators of my generation that are getting out of it as well. Uh, they're getting out of the field, uh, for a number of reasons, and so, um, the, the, what they're noticing is, is the, the, uh, the applicants they're getting are coming from other fields as well, as they're a little bit on the younger side. Um, and they, uh, they're, but they're noticing they're, they're more, um, they're bringing in a, a different perspective than, say, the, the ones that kind of went through the process like I did and, and are kind of of my generation. Um, so they, they said it's, it's a very interesting time, one that they haven't seen before, so it's got, it's got its pros and cons, but i- if you're asking, I would, I would think you're going to get a better applicant pool, and you're going to get probably more qualified applicants having, working with a recruitment, um, company, and that's, that's just my, my opinion, but you certainly can, I, I will do whatever you guys direct me to, but that, that's-
No, I just wanted to make sure we had a discussion on it. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to get the proposals from the, um, headhunters or whatever the proper term is for, from these firms, but want to make sure that we're not excluding internal candidates. If somebody works for the city and wants to apply, I mean, we absolutely want to make sure that, that that is communicated as being welcome, in, in my opinion, for the interim role or for the full-time position. So, uh, just want to make sure that we're not completely turning away from internal candidates, if there is one. Not to say that that's the right fit by any, by any means, but that should be an option.
Anybody else have anything? All right. I guess bringing the proposals back, um, more discussion in the next work session and see if they have any ideas for the interim side of it also. I guess go from there.
Well, I guess if you, if, I mean, it's just as far as time, particularly maybe with the interim, uh, depending when I get back, um, could I put it on the, the next council meeting? You, you don't have to take action on it, but you certainly could discuss it as well. It's kind of pull it up a week.
Anybody else have anything to offer on that one? Not entertain a motion adjourned?
Can I just make a comment? And it's not about that, it's, uh, um, at the next meeting, we're going to have a BCA, um, document and an agreement, it's a joint, uh, agreement that's going to be there. We need to get it in place. Uh, the systems that we use through the, um, the police, that, uh, contract has lapsed, so they got ahold of me. They want to make sure that it's put on there. I've given, uh, Megan a, a proposed resolution, and it'll be on next, next, uh, meeting to, to act upon, but I wanted everybody to, uh, have an understanding of why it was coming so quickly. They got ahold of me here just last week and said that we needed to get, act on it and get it in place so we can continue to use the BCA's legal, uh, systems.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thanks. Entertained a motion adjourned. Goodbye, Vedder. Second by Larson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.